I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So even though we have a public comment on the agenda, there is nobody here. So we'll just pass that by, we offered, and we'll go straight to the work, budget work session agenda.
Yeah, so tonight, one of the things we wanted to do is chat with you a little bit about our efforts in this budget to continue to address teacher effectiveness and how we're working to sustain our investment in teacher professional development, collaboration, embedded PD in the classroom. So as a way, and I've asked Steve Zadovick actually, to share with you our most recent state assessment results, and then to kind of work into how we're thinking as we move ahead next year and using some of the federal monies and some of the steps we're taking for strategic improvement here in the district. So, Mr. Zadovick?
So, I'd like to start with, you know, a little bit of an overview of a quick presentation for you this evening to start framing out, again, staying focused on results and just on the heels as of this Monday of a public release of the kneecap assessment results for the students that took those assessments last October. We figured this would be a good way to start the conversation, but then to lead into those systems that we feel we have in place and are getting in place that are leading to positive results, as well as our plan to sustain that and to build on that, and how it ties in with the work teachers are doing. So, I'll take you through, and I think at your place, you have a short little piece of the slides here. But I'll take you through slide by slide of some of the results. Of course, we could go into greater depth on kneecap assessment, but I think our purpose here is to really talk about some of the system strategies that we want to have in place to help expand teacher effectiveness. So, this first slide is the elementary math results, and each school is listed. And you can see that in this most recent assessment, whereas the state stayed fairly flat in the scores of percent proficient, all three of our elementary schools rose significantly in performance, including quite a rise in Don Darrow's elementary math scores, and also significant rises at Little Harbor and New Franklin. A couple of things in terms of math, and this is true at all levels, elementary, middle, and math. If you recall, two years ago when we started planning for the ERA stimulus funds, we did have a conscious effort, knowing that math was an area we wanted to target more closely, to use those funds to support for teachers. And in many places, that took the form of coaching or intervention in helping build some strategies for students. So that, I think, is part of what we're seeing. Probably even a bigger part of what you're seeing is really the work of the teacher professional learning community teams. Remember, these are teachers at grade level that are getting together regularly to look at student assessment results, to plan for how they can best meet the needs of students, and to monitor student progress. And that, one of the ways that you've supported them in that work is through the monthly delayed openings, at which time they get together and work on those things. So, all of that together certainly is showing up in some of the results in math and reading. And I would also point out, although you don't have a grade-by-grade level breakdown, our third grade results are really remarkable for, in the second year in a row, where we have very strong third grade results. And I'd remind you, this is the second year now that we might see some effects of full-day kindergarten sustaining through into kneecap assessment. So, that's math. One particular grade level of note would be Little Harbor, third grade had 97% of their students proficient in math, so I think that was, that's quite a remarkable result. Elementary reading, a similar-looking graph, whereas the state stayed fairly flat in performance, all three elementary schools rose significantly. And again, a lot of great stories to tell here. I'll only share one of them with you. Don Darrow's second grade last year, if you recall, as you got updated regularly from principals on the work of the PLCs, professional learning communities in their schools, the Don Darrow example shared with you was the example of the second-grade teachers working in literacy. In that team, in that professional learning community team, they were looking at the developmental reading assessment, DRA scores, which is an assessment we give in the fall and spring. And they chose to set a goal, and we've had all teams select goals, they chose to set a goal of having 80% of their students score proficient by the end of the year. Those same students, at the end of their first grade year, had scored at only 46% at benchmark, as it's called in the DRA. So, they were taking those students scoring at 46, and they set that goal to be at 80% at benchmark. In the spring of that year, although you didn't get the report at the end, at the very end of the year, you got progress reports along the way, at the end, they ended up at about 70% at benchmark in the second grade last year at Don Darrow. Those same students took the kneecap assessment this fall, and they, that grade level scored 90% proficient on the kneecap. So again, a nice success story for them, a good example of where teams are really leveraging their ability to work collaboratively. In middle school math, where last, for the last few years, we've noted a bit of a concern in terms of performance, that tide has turned a little bit here. And you can see, whereas last year we scored below the state average, this year we're back up above the state average. Certainly a trend we would plan to continue. And as I think you're aware, Mr. Stokel has been putting a lot of thought and planning into how to support students not only in math, but in all subject areas, but particularly in math, whereas last year they had a math interventionist position. This year, they've found ways to still sustain that way of helping students who are struggling using existing math teachers. So, that's work that's ongoing this year, and we anticipate seeing the continuation of some success. Middle school reading, which had been scoring fairly level and fairly high, did dip a little bit, is pretty much on par with the state average right now. Not a significant change in either direction for the state or us in this. But again, this is an area where Mr. Stokel is looking at, how do we structure the schedule? How do we structure support? So it's not just about math intervention, it's really about for all students getting some additional help and support when needed. At the high school level in reading, we again started a pattern of separating, while we've been above the state average, that gap has been shrinking, and that also something that we've been trying to pay attention to. And now, our sort of gap, if you will, level above the state average has increased a bit. And we're at about 80% proficient in reading at the high school. So that's a fairly strong result. And again, we've had a lot of work put into trying to pay attention to students' success in reading and then looking at how we can take time where they're working in study centers and other times in their schedule, and really get them some direct instruction support. In math, a similar kind of story, although as you may recall, the math picture statewide has never been that great in terms of percent proficient. And in our case, while we've scored significantly above the state, last year, we certainly had a little bit of a concern with the results from last, from the fall before. This year, we've risen, and again, risen at a pace a little better than the state. So we're significantly above that state average again. In math, again, at the high school is an example of where we took that ERA money and used it for some math intervention. This year, as you'll hear from Mr. Collins, I'm sure more throughout the year, part of the plan at the high school is to use other supports for students during their study center time and to give them even more direct instruction and practice, so that we can not only get them additional support for learning, but also be able to monitor that more frequently and to know how they're doing. So, how does that all fit in with our plan going forward around sustaining improvement? And I just remind you, when we talk about interventions, what we're really talking about is a multi-layered approach to helping students. And we typically describe these in three tiers. The first tier being just the general regular classroom instruction. I go to math for, you know, 60 minutes a day as a student, that's tier one. Every student is in that same rotation, and teachers are using various strategies within that tier. So there are different things going on. We don't subscribe to just a one-size-fits-all strategy. So, as some examples, you see teachers utilizing technology to help reach different learners. I think a good example of that, if you think back to that great score at Little Harbor in third grade, you know, you recall that the second grade is really where we've invested the most technology support in terms of their own initiative to bring out with the Promethean Boards some interventions. And I'm not suggesting that that's solely the cause for the great performance on the third grade assessment, but certainly they're looking at a lot of ways to help students. So that's really one of the things that we're trying to bring to scale, is, are the good things happening in classrooms and what teachers are doing, and they're working hard to share what's going on. This year, at the elementary level, we also have teachers working collaboratively to design lessons, something we call lesson study. And that's work that we would hopefully see supported and continued, is teachers collaborating with each other to design better and better lessons. And then the tier-two strategies are, those are those things where students would get extra additional time and support. So for example, it could be something as informal and less frequent as coming after school once in a while for help, the homework club at the middle school, study centers at the high school. These are all examples of tier-two interventions, time above the regular classroom to get support. And our focus this year and over the last couple of years has been to become more and more deliberate and plan better and better, so that it's not just by chance or by invitation that students get that support, but it's designed into their day, they're required to do it, and it's not a choice. So that's something that we're looking at building. And then tier-three, which is really that next level, whereas you may find that sure, 80% or so of the students are reaching benchmark or proficiency just in regular classroom instruction, well, maybe an additional 15% of those need a tier-two intervention to get to benchmark or grade level. There may be a 5% or so group of students left who need even more support, and that's what we would term tier-three. Sometimes that takes the form of intensive special education services, although it's not exclusively defined by special education, or it could be, you know, additional programming, et cetera, for students. So that's a quick overview of the tiers. And when we talk about instructional coaches, which is what Mr. McDonough started with, which is to talk about how do we sustain improvement and how do we continue teacher collaboration and focus on effectiveness, the role of the instructional coach would be to help facilitate those discussions with teachers all around that tier-one instruction. That is to say, how do we continue to meet the needs of more and more students by designing effective lessons, by looking at assessment results together, and by, you know, setting our goals appropriately? So the role of an instructional coach in a professional learning community is really to focus teachers on that, to look at data, student learning, and to look at designing some professional development. We've had some great examples of professional development offerings over the last couple of years in what the instructional coach would do, and again, we're looking at one in literacy and one in math, is they would be the point person for designing some professional development across the district. So when we see a great thing happening in one school, we're able to bring that to scale. We're able to organize teachers to either come after school for a workshop or to take one of our delayed openings or in-service day and really focus on that. And again, as you recall, all teams set SMART goals. And to this point, those goals have been designed by the team, and they will remain so. But certainly, what an instructional coach could do is be a line of communication across teams and across buildings, so that when we set goals, we're informed by each other's targets, and we can build on that. And also, just as we grow with the work of professional learning communities, we've been at work at this now for a few years. We feel that it's showing signs, and we're seeing evidence of success. But what we want to do, again, is hone our skills of collaboration. How do we become more and more effective working with each other? How might we use technology to help foster that collaboration? How might we take it to the next level? And an instructional coach can sort of help on building team effectiveness in that way as well. What it's not, then, is somebody who's going around to each and every elementary teacher in the district and trying to just observe their classroom and give them some pointers. That's not something that's terribly sustainable with the number of teachers that we have, but it certainly can be achieved through having us, having teachers work even more effectively together. So, again, our point would be to bring all of the effective practices to scale. I mentioned lesson study before. That's something we're doing in math through the support of a grant we had written last year and is supporting the work of some consultants coaching this year. Those folks are Susan Deese and Robin Burdick, both of whom had worked in the district, now are working with teachers across the whole district to collaborate on designing lessons. And part of that project is to identify what we had called teacher leaders in math. So we, as part of this project, had selected two or three people at each building to help Robin and Susan facilitate this process. And it's these folks who were seeing the, the design is really to build their leadership capacity as well. It's from the pool of these folks that we might choose to take one of them as one of, as the math instructional coach across the district. So, we're looking at tapping teachers who are building their own capacity for leadership and who have the respect of the staff in the district and to put into those positions. So, a couple of examples that we've seen, certainly at different buildings. One of the things that's been very popular is for teachers to get together and form study groups. A good example of that is at both Little Harbor and Don Darrow, where they're choosing a professional book to read and to discuss and to think about how it implies their classroom practice. We certainly want to take more and more opportunity to bring teachers together across the buildings, across the district, to be, have conversations about consistent outcomes. We've, this, just in a couple of weeks, we'll be administering a mid-year math assessment, something we're doing different this year, something that we've had the assistance of Ann Mordecai, another resource in the district, to help build. And so what we want to do is tie in the instructional coaching with our continued monitoring of student progress. And as part of that, as you're probably aware, nationally, on the landscape, is what is known as the Common Core set of standards. This is a core set of national standards. We've already set our own, had conversations to determine our own, what we call power standards. But this is sort of the power standards equivalent on the national level. And what, certainly what we'd want to do is sort of reflect on our own power standards, our own curriculum, based on this new Common Core. So this position of an instructional coach could be a leader in that conversation in math and then in reading. And as I mentioned before, just one of the possibilities that I always feel is just a few steps away by helping support teachers getting on board and becoming used to it, is using some technology for collaboration. We're seeing greater and greater use of things like Moodle across the district. And one of the things that we would hope to do is to break down some of the barriers of, you know, we can't all get together around the same table at the same time, but yet find ways to collaborate meaningfully. So those are just some of the outcomes we would hope an instructional coach would bring and help bring some of the district improvement work to scale at the elementary level. As Mr. McDonough said, we'd be looking at some of our existing grant, federally grant-funded sources to sustain this. And these grants, we have in the past used for teachers getting together in the summer or different conferences and things that have helped build our knowledge of professional learning communities. What we would hope to do is sort of reinvest that money in a person, or specifically in two people, that would help build this sort of on a district-wide scale. So that's a quick.
Great, Steve, thank you very much, that was great.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Zadovick?
Well, you know, it just keeps getting better. I mean, it's really exciting news to, I mean, the PLC work was great, but now having some more muscle behind it to continue the pressure that is happening in the PLC with this instructional coach. I know we saw a lot of information on SMART goals, and then looking at some of the metrics from the kneecaps, I'm trying to remember, you know, because obviously, you know, 50% is 50%, but I know we had some of those power standards, and then they set SMART goals for certain achievement. You know, did we achieve some of those numbers? And of course, I'm trying to correlate, you know, what I see in the chart to what we were trying to achieve.
Yeah, in a number of ways, we did, although many of our SMART goals in literacy were based on the developmental reading assessment, the DRA, as the example from Don Darrow was. We've seen a correlation to success on the SMART goal with success on the kneecap assessment. In math, many of our teams had goals that related to students' ability to communicate their reasoning. And although I haven't gotten to this level of detail in the analysis of the data yet, what I would wonder about is, did our scores where students had to write their open response, write their reasoning out, did we see a larger bump in those areas? Because that's really where we spent a good bit of time in the PLC teams last year in math. So, yeah, I think we're seeing those results, and I think when teachers look at these, the data here, it'll just inform that next level of goal-setting.
Last question was just, when I look at comparative to New Hampshire, you know, the first question I have is, is New Hampshire the right comparative? And of course, when you talk about kneecap, you know, we're talking about New England. And I don't know enough about how kneecap standardization equates to New York or some other state. So, curious in terms of, you know, trying to level set and say, here we are in New England. So we know we have at least a baseline, is New Hampshire the right, you know? I mean, sure, it's a good graph to have, so we can say, here we are in the state, but is New Hampshire the right one, or do we add some others in there?
Well, you know, one of the things that is sort of on that point, the only assessment nationally that would be across all states is the National Assessment of Educational Progress, the NAEP assessment. I know Ms. Walker helps administer that here in New Hampshire.
Every day.
And so, one of the things that, we just had last week, the results from the last science assessment released, which were consistent with the reading and math results, which basically show New Hampshire at or near the top of the country on that common national assessment. So, you know, that certainly is one of the, one of the things, when you look at these graphs, like you said, it's all nice and good to see this, but how does that compare at a national level? And just by that, you know, logic of that one assessment, certainly, I think we can feel pretty good about the relative place, you know, nationally. But certainly, there are other things that we would want to look at and compare in those discussions. And again, we're never satisfied by just being above that state average line. It's not only what are some of the other comparisons for us, but also how are we comparing against our own progress and our own growth? And that's where I think the SMART goals really help us sort of set that direction.
Sure. And I think this is just part of an ongoing story where, you know, people take a very quick snapshot of, you know, how's Portsmouth doing? And, you know, they don't necessarily read the details, but they take a look at a graph and they go, you know, we're doing well, or we're not doing well. And I think just adding some more detail, you know, really helps tell that story, you know, that we are doing in a number of areas. So, thank you.
And I would just add to that, because what are the other two New England states that also take the same exact kneecap?
We have Vermont and Rhode Island and Maine also.
Okay, so the question would be, so even not nationally, but regionally, how does New Hampshire relate to all the other states? That would be actually helpful information to get.
Yeah, we can dig that out.
I just wanted to say, congratulations, I think this is incredible results. It seems like this is exactly what you wanted when you set out to do what you've been doing, both you and Ed, and I think you both should take a night off, go out and celebrate. Earned it.
Well, I think all the teachers should have a night off.
And them too, and we'll just call it a big snow day.
Yeah.
Good idea.
How about that? Clearer snow day tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Teachers can have the day off.
But we'll see if you can do these results again next year with all these snowstorms.
Right, yeah.
No, it's really terrific, and thank you so much for all the work you've done. I did have one question. I guess the only comment that I always wonder about when you label things, like a coach, I just, it doesn't sound necessary, it doesn't sound as serious and professional as a teacher. And it just, this is my initial reaction when I hear coach, I think sports. And I think, maybe we don't need this. And I just worry that as we go through future years of budget cuts, you know, I think you did a good job tonight of explaining what it is, and I think we need to really keep that in mind, so that people really don't view this as something that's just an extra, that, you know, we can just get rid of, because we're not going to get rid of teachers, but we could get rid of the coaches, because they're not really necessary. So that would be the only comment that I had about this, but thank you.
I just wanted to comment about the coach aspect, because basically, teachers these days are considered coaches more so than teachers. The teacher's not standing in front of the room directing. The teacher is really acting as a coach. So, I think over time, that will be more.
People will become used to it, yeah.
Also, in terms of the NAEP, I was happy to, we had been hearing, those of us who do the assessment, that New Hampshire kids had done very well, and that fourth grade especially had done very well. And I have been really pleased at how seriously the kids all take that. Now, today I was doing Rochester Middle School eighth graders, and, you know, the snow is falling down, and, you know, and they're looking out the window, but they are working really hard. And also articulating the fact that this is important to do, even though their name is not on their work, and they get no individual results, but that their school and state get the information. So, it's a good test to see how the kids are doing.
Well, I'm just impressed that the PLCs are really paying off, and they don't cost a lot of money, which is a really wonderful thing. And I think it's what the administration's been suggesting all along, that organizing, and in many ways, it just makes common sense, you know? Organize teachers together to sit around and talk about how to impact and improve the student achievements, especially, the achievement of their students, especially the ones who are having difficulty. You know, those who are scoring proficient, they seem to be doing fine, and maybe we just need to think of ways to actually give them a little more differentiated instruction so that they could be challenged, but the PLCs really seem to be being effective. I mean, it's hard to say exactly that's why we're improving. I think it's, there's some evidence to suggest that that's really what's happening, is that teachers are working together across the grades, they're having joint conversations throughout the school year, there's common assessments going on.
Yeah, and I would just add that, one of the things, and you didn't see this in the data you have here, but as you look at the four levels, one substantially below proficient, two is partially proficient, three is proficient, and four is proficient with distinction. Not only did we see a larger number of students at those upper two levels, but we saw a nice bump up of students at that level four, at that proficient with distinction. So I think, you know, there's some evidence to suggest that those students who already were proficient are indeed being challenged to move to an even higher level.
Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you, Carol, and, you know, I want to thank Mr. Zadovick. Clearly, the teachers, the work the administrators and teachers have done, I mean, it's a credit to them, their parents, and of course, the children who are taking the assessment. They've done great, great work here, and so we're proud of the results. Moving to budget, I guess this is ultimately a budget work. Moving to budget, I guess this is ultimately a budget workshop, isn't it? The, I'm going to ask Mr. Bartlett to share with you a couple of updates in, in terms of next steps with budget. We did meet with the city manager, and we were looking essentially at our sick leave at term fund. We allocate $500,000 the last few years for those folks who are exercising their right to take a three-year payback before they retire. And based on some numbers that Steve had, and we confirmed it, I think, with the city manager, the finance director, and the HR director this afternoon, we can make an adjustment there. And then we have a, a paper that we want to share with you, looking at operationally, looking at our operational budget, which is about 1.9 million, at what percent could everybody take a small adjustment? And so what, in that sheet, I'll let Steve walk you through that, so you get some sense of what's, what's going on with that as well. So, Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. I handed out previous, you should already be at your, your place. As we go through a piece at a time of this, and a, and a level, at time of, you know, working on this budget, as we, we were asked last time, if, you know, if A doesn't happen, what's B, and then what's C? So we've sort of been, been trying to, to roll it out in, in logical pieces, and, and try to show you the reductions logically, and, you know, sort of a linear fashion. One of the things that, that I've been working on is the sick leave at term fund. I mean, it's a stabilization fund. And when I first got here, we were, I don't know how long we'd actually been in it before I got here, but, but we had, we were seriously behind in, in our share of the fund. So in other words, all the departments participate, but based on how, on what you're putting in versus what you're expending, you know, you have a position in the fund. So when I first got here, we were quite, you know, quite far behind. So we increased the, the yearly contribution. When I got here, it was a million, and we started to analyze it, we were able to drop it back to 900,000. And then a couple of years ago, based on, on the usage in our position, we were able to drop it down to, to 500,000 a year. So each year, we contribute 500,000 against what we draw off. And we have occasionally been, you know, a little bit negative, but we've been catching up. So we're at the point right now where we are in, in, in pretty decent shape. So we're, we're basically about even in that fund, just a little bit behind. But for all intents and purposes, in a big picture way, at this, at this point in time with our projections, I felt comfortable with making a request that we drop that down to 400,000 for next year. And so we were able to take another 100,000 off towards our, you know, as we're progressing to zero. So that, that leaves us with about 270,000. So the, the other, one of the other options is to share the pain and, and look at the operating side. So what I prepared was an exhibit which will show you, I tried to group it by school or by, you know, certain logical grouping. So if you look on the first page, you can see that Don Darrow has a total, in my classification anyways, of, of an operating budget that they control in the school of about 45,000. If we were to take a 1% reduction, it would be 450. I wouldn't recommend taking any more than 5% reduction, which would be the 2251, or somewhere in between. But at the 5% reduction, if you, if we were to do that equally across all these cost centers, in theory, we would be able to take another 100,000 off that target number. Gets us down to 170. And basically, it's from a, an operational standpoint, some contract services, but things like printing and some postage and supplies and things like that. So these are the things that they have the most control over, in terms of how they can channel them, depending upon the, the student load and the needs of the, of the teachers in the class each year. So a lot of these are, you know, are target placeholder numbers based on, you know, on history, and we're able to adjust those over time. So.
Another step. We did share this document, we had an administrative team meeting this morning, so we looked at it, all the principals, directors, and, and had a sense of how it would impact their area. And, and they, they seemed to think that was reasonable, given the, you know, the situation we're in. But we, again, no more than 5% was really kind of the, the feeling, which would net us just over $98,000, I think, in terms of progress towards the budget. Remember, last time we met, there was a $370,000 shortfall. If we have the adjustment in sick leave at term, and we have this adjustment here, we're, we're just about $170,000 shy of the target. And we are expecting, as a next step, retirements, if anybody opts out for that incentive, they have to do so by next Monday on the 7th of February. We will go to the city council, you know, and share that information with them. So a week and a half away, we're, we're getting very close, in terms of hitting the, the target set by the council and you as a board.
I know it's just 5%, but I guess I feel like I just need to say that I know from my own personal experience, and also from talking to a lot of parents, mostly from Little Harbor School, is that when they volunteer, that there are very few supplies at the schools, and they're like, have to beg for a paperclip. I mean, is what I've been told, that it's really tight. And I know parents are donating a lot. You know, I know it's just 5%, but I just think I need to sort of say that at least that's what I've seen, and that's what I've heard. They have very little, and I guess I look at this and I say, books, you know? I mean, I can see postage, et cetera, but books? You know, I, I haven't, since I've been on this board, and since I've been a parent in this school system, I haven't seen a lot of books being purchased, and a lot of books. You know, we've, I think in past years, we've looked at, like, what they have at the middle school for their social studies textbook, and it's not like we have a lot of new books coming into the system. So that's my comments, you know, I know it's, I understand where you're coming from with this. It's just, you know, taking blood from a stone.
Well, I think the other alternative is people.
Teachers from a stone.
And I think books are overrated.
You've got a Kindle?
No, I, I mean, that's semi-faustiously, but, you know, I mean, at K-12, especially at the low grades, I think books are most important. But I'm telling you, at the university level, we're hardly buying any books, at all. You know, we buy subscriptions to eBooks, but we hardly ever buy hard co, hardbound books anymore. Still do some in certain disciplines, but generally, hard copy books are, they're very expensive.
But not for the elementary school level.
No, I know, at the elementary school level, especially K-5.
I was just going to mention that, that generally, in, I think it's probably in the separate budget, the reading budget, but most of the schools have large numbers of books that libraries within each classroom and within their library, that teachers select and the committees select, so that you have a lot of, I know, we were building up a bigger library of nonfiction books, because we had lots and lots of fiction, but not as much nonfiction. So every year, we were getting newer books all the time, so. And then, of course, the other day, at the curriculum council meeting, the high school math people were talking about doing the electronic books and not, not necessarily purchasing, being much less expensive, and they're outdated so quickly. Not so much the math, except they commented, they were talking about floppy disks, and the kids weren't too sure what they were. And probably illustrations were kind of interesting as well, but that's the way we're headed, really.
Yeah, I, I know things are more complex than looking at a couple of pieces of paper, but, you know, 5%, you know, we take off. You know, I'm guessing there's potential to, you know, go less than that in some areas and more in others, obviously, to, you know, because it's, you know, some areas, you say, hey, we can only do 1%. In other areas, say, hey, wow, we might be able to do seven or, or more. But, you know, the thing that, of course, staring at a, a piece of paper with the stuff the way it's presented, always has me looking at things like coordination, because there's a lot of things that are being purchased, a lot of things that are being done, that I start to think of, that, you know, going back to how we actually purchase, and, you know, the whole requisition process of general supplies, the books, you know, becoming smarter about how we go out and buy things. And, you know, of course, 5% doesn't seem like a lot, when you look at the numbers, but, you know, if we're tight already, as Carol says, you know, we might be just squeezing blood from a stone. And then, of course, being close to something that I, I look at on a pretty regular basis, I look back here at things like the technology budget, and, you know, and maybe wanting to talk to Tom Lottz about, you know, things that maybe could be done differently, because there's, you know, out of all the monies that are there, that's got the, one of the biggest trunks in there.
Well, I think basically, I mean, in order to, in order to have an exhibit or anything, I, I think you have to, to look at it precisely that way, is that if you sit there and say, there's their total is 5%, but each of the administrators of those cost centers has the flexibility to say, they're going to mix and match so that the average is 5%. And this is just, you have to have some way to quantify it to move forward. You know, I, I think the first year I was here, I sat there, and Mitch sat next to me, and he was asking me questions about the budget process. And then the second year, he sat next to me, the budget, he said, I think I get it. You have it all here is one way, but the first day of school, everything starts changing. It's a very fluid process. And so, you know, what looks good on paper here in a thing is certainly not necessarily going to fall exactly that way.
I never said I got it.
You did. I thought you got it. I thought it was a pretty good comment, based on the question as the first time.
Any other? So, we're down to 170,000. Today is Tuesday, the 1st, right?
Yes.
We don't have a meeting on Thursday, just to let people know that there's a presentation at the high school on Boleen. And then the following Tuesday is the 8th, and the following Thursday is our vote. And the 8th is the public hearing as well. Not a lot of time, and there's not going to be much, you know, free time for discussion. We're going to have to use our time as wisely as possible, especially on the 8th.
Roughly $17,000 a day we need to find until we vote. Makes it a little more palatable.
That's all.
One bite at a time.
You know, just going through it, and, you know, different budgets every year and so forth, you know, and, and I think we have to say that we're, we're assuming it's 170,000 right now. We have a couple of unknown factors that, you know, if it, if it doesn't, we don't want surprises back on, on the public. So, I mean, I'm very up and honest on that type of stuff. So I hope that's where we're at a week, well, I hope, no, a week from tonight, we, we'd have to be at zero, if that's what the board so desires. A couple of things that I'd like to get a little more in-depth and detail on to make sure, as I look over this between now and a week from tonight, because that seems to be our last full go with this, and having the public also coming in that night, you know, they can shed light sometimes on things, and I hope, you know, they're open and honest and, you know. I've almost come to the point where we get to that type of public hearing, that I wish there was a way for us to dialogue with them, because sometimes I'll walk away and we'll have a question. And I'll leave that open for both the chair and the superintendent to sort of ponder that. Allow, allow a board member, because I think we, and I'm hoping we hear from the public that night, that if we have a question, that we might be able to ask that individual. Kind of breaks the rules a little, but sometime, the problem is, is it's that night, and then Thursday night, and, you know, by the time you that person, you know, we might be able to grab them. So I, I, kind of a town meeting.
A question to, to ask.
Yeah, somebody has, you know, has something that they've, you know, seen in our system, or, you know, somebody from the system comes in and speaks, I, I would like to be able to at least ask where or how, you know, why they might suggest, you know, the ABC elimination or addition or whatever. And it might not happen. I mean, I'm just saying, with nobody here tonight, maybe that's what's going to happen then. I hope not, because it's a last chance. Because there is a giant change happening within the school system this year. I mean, I don't think people should walk away and say, you know, this was seamless. We're, guidance is totally redesigned. We're redesigning other areas that are going to affect the students' abilities and so forth. I mean, taking away the outreach counselors within the elementary schools is an unknown factor. We could end up with one child acting up and again. It's like going to Vegas and betting a little bit. But the questions I have tonight, I'm going to go down just through, and I'm going to go through the budget book, which I really hope, you know, I, I've gone through, I've just got started to do some highlighting further on, and that, I know on Tuesday night, I'm going to ask a little bit more in-depth questions. But I'm going down through a couple of lines. On page one, I just want to make sure something was explained here on page one. 115 athletics, it says salaries, 270,516. You go way over, and it says positions FTEs is one. I hope that's not quite, I mean, can I have an explanation on that? I want to make sure that we don't have one FTE at 270,000. I want to make sure we can get into better detail.
You actually have only one full-time employee, which is the clerical. Everything else is a stipend. So with stipends, we don't put FTEs on. The athletic director is not an employee of the school department, technically. We still an employee of the city, so we reimburse the city under contract services. So therefore, you only have one FTE.
So this is the coaching salaries, and that's why I'm saying it's a little.
That's coaching stipend.
Right, yeah, but if you're the general public, you don't know that. And I think, you know, an explanation on, on that, well, Steve, Steve, you're rolling your head here. We got a, a page here that I've been questioned to by the public, it says 270,000, and we've got one FTE. And, and it, if you look at that in generalizations, you would say, there's somebody making 270,000. And I want to make sure that's not what's out there. They need to know that that's the coaching salaries, and we have, and this is a big question. How many coaches does that go into? Well, when I try to explain this to somebody, that's, you know, a, a team can decide to divide up the salary to a degree, or not a salary, or how many coaches they wish to have on that team. They get, we'll say it's $5,000, and they want five coaches to help them out, they can use 5,000, $1,000 each. So I mean, that, you know, gets into, you know, except, with the exception, if they're a teacher. If they're a teacher, they fall under the teacher's guidelines of what they are to be paid. Is that correct?
Everybody falls under the teacher's guidelines to what they're be paid.
So they could only divide it so much?
Even a teacher could divide it if they want to. The stipend guidelines are outlined in the contract, and if they, and the, and the number of positions are also outlined. If they, someone wants to do it, you know, and have an extra person and volunteer part of their salary for it, they certainly can do that.
That's correct.
I can't just, you can't add two.
So do we know the number of coaches that that can be divided into? And can we get that number?
I, I can give you the number that I have estimated in the teacher's contract, yes, but I, I have, I mean, I don't know who's going to want to split it next year.
Well, we could do this past year, how many we split that salary ran to. And then, another thing is, we have some of the coach that decide not to take any money. Yes, we do.
I'm sure that's probably the case.
Yeah, so I want to make sure. Getting along into the next page, and we get down to cost center 165, out of district, out of district tuitions. First question on that, that is just the tuitions, that does not include, because I know it's further on in the, in the budget, but I want to make sure others that have read this understand that that is the tuition that we pay for the students that are sent out, but does not include transportation, busing.
In some cases, it would include transportation if it's billed the other way, if it's billed back in, but very rarely.
back in, but very rarely is that included to a great degree.
The facility would have transportation and they put that in as part of their costs. Is that correct?
That's correct. So, if they're, if, just like when we charge a tuition outside, it's made up of the various components. If there is a transportation component within that tuition, then that would be included in there, but that's not, by and large, there's not that much in there, is my understanding.
Well, then, and let's just say, the majority of it is then that of instructional tuition payment that we're making. I mean, there may be a few other things in there. And we're going to go from 1,370,000 up to 1,530, 153,000, 1,553,304. How many students do we, this year, have out being tuitioned out approximately?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Ms. Winsley shared that at her last presentation.
If I remember, it's like 37 seemed to be about, somewhere between 30 and 37.
I can ask her again.
All right. Because if I base it off that, when we had that, and I'm basing it on the lower side of the number, we're saying it's, we'll say it's 30 students that we have that way, and if that stands, you know, dividing that out, and again, I know there's a large swing on that, I mean, there are students unfortunate costs, but averaging it out, you know, we're talking 51,010 per student on that. Our single highest per student cost, is that a fairly correct assumption that we know at this time that our out-of-district students, Steve Z is over there saying that's probably pretty true of that.
Yeah. When I look at the detailed backup in the proposed budget, I see, I count up 20 students listed as out-of-district tuitions, and then the 12 students at RJLA.
Right.
At 13,713 each. So, it's about 32 students, 20 who are not at the Lister Academy.
Right. 20 not at the Lister and so forth. And, you know, I happen to bump in, and, you know, those who aren't all natives, I don't care what they call it today, pick and pay. Always be known as pick and pay, no matter what they say from Hannafords.
Have they changed the name?
Huh? Have they changed it? No, they didn't change it. The breakfast counter is still closed, though, if anybody knows. Used to get a good 99 cent breakfast. And it was an interesting conversation with an individual that I had, and I really appreciate her, former student of the Portsmouth School System, and gone into special ed elsewhere. And if you just take in autism, and we did an autism class and something for thought, you know, we're sending them to, most of our kids with autism go over to, I want to call it learning tree, Beech?
Birch.
Birch Tree. Birch Tree. It's an extremely high cost when we look at Birch Tree. Is that not a correct statement? I mean, that's one of our highest for the backup documents. Do you have that in front of you, Ed?
Yes, one student, 82,350.
Say that again.
One student, 82,350.
Yeah. And I just, again, think, you know, we get court placements, there are things that we don't do, and I'm not sure, because if we just take that out of our special ed budget, the out-of-district tuition, it becomes astronomical amount per student. And then you go ahead and you add that back into our in-district special ed students and so forth, you know? Ed, where do you see this going? Anywhere better down the road financially for us? Is there, you know, some type of, I mean, these private companies are having to make money, obviously off of us. I mean, they wouldn't stay in existence if they didn't. Should we examine what we can do internally to try to cut our costs back? Is it an impossibility?
Well, you know, we had this conversation a year ago, when we really said we had the autism specialist out of Dundee Row, and that we were going to look to move students to one location and try to be efficient in that manner. But, you know, it's very difficult when you have a child who's in a neighborhood, attending a neighborhood school, and to say, now, we're going to run you across town and send you there. So, there's a lot of, I would say, opposition to making that kind of an adjustment in last year's budget. We really wanted to look at, you know, being more efficient consolidating a program at a building location. So, we've had conversations about it, we've thought about it. I wish Paula were here, I could give you the exact numbers. I don't have them off the top of my head, but often there are opportunities to do something in-house, be efficient, and perhaps even tuition folks from another district in. I mean...
And my reason for asking is, you're taking a major change on special ed this year. You know, you're eliminating the special ed director's position, and you're dividing out the responsibilities and the duties to other buildings. And that's why I asked this question here, because that's how this conversation sort of developed, you know, in my head, you know, a person was just saying, you know, they happen to be in that field, but, you know, then I started to think, wait, we're redoing this, we are going at the building-type level, you, I mean, I think it's a very good move. I think, like a lot of things in education, it's an experiment, but here's an opportunity for us, if we're doing it building-wise and we're taking off that upper level, is there more to be looked at? And it sounds like it's an open dialogue.
Yeah, yeah. This is, I think this is a relatively good number. You might remember a year ago, we adjusted this number downward, and we're managing right now, as we currently are existing, you know, I know you've had conversations with Paula and Marge Achilles in the office, we're a little bit above what we have in current year budget to deal with out-of-district tuition. So, and I know we're managing and we're looking at other areas to make that balance. So, this is, this, you know, it's a snapshot in time of what you know and who's going where and what the, you know, what the agreements are. And somebody moves in next week?
September.
There goes the budget. Somebody moves out, oh, there's a savings, and we can, you know, so it's very, that's a very fluid, you know, special ed, out-of-district placements, court audit and otherwise. It's hard to say. We know we got a sum certain at RJL Academy, we're paying roughly, what, 130, 140,000 for 12 students? Total, that's a firm cost. As kids move out, we can maybe move a new one from the high school in, that's fluid as well. Kids are coming and going, you'd be surprised to what extent. It's not a locked population. The autism program, as I said, we looked at that a year ago and thought there was some opportunity for that. It's very difficult, I think, to change hearts and minds about, you know, coming in. And then you've got to go market it if you want to bring tuition dollars into you.
Oh, yeah, been down that road, and I don't think I'm looking for that.
Okay.
I think, you know, we look at the deaf program, it was fine as long as we had a, I'm going to say, a 50-50 break, 50% of our students had, were hearing impaired, but when we got to zero and we were tuitioning them, the door closed.
I hear you.
Moving down, under line 171.
Kent, can I ask you a question about that? Because I thought, actually, that you were moving in a direction of also asking whether, when we sign these contracts for these services, is there any competition outside for any of these services?
Yeah, and I think...
Or are they just the set fee? Do we have any leverage, I mean, when working with some of these agencies for the service that helps for these tuition outside services? Or is it pretty much, we take what's nearby and what we can bus kids through?
I don't have direct experience with any of those negotiations, but I am aware of the fact that they do spend a good deal of time trying to figure out what is the best placement, and I know that, that, you know, I work with Marge constantly to try to make adjustments and everything else based on, you know, everybody's efforts. So, could I sit there and tell you that there's three choices?
I wouldn't think that there are.
Not my level of expertise or area of expertise, just, you know, working on the results.
There may be some competition. I think that it's limited in certain fields. I think autism right now, there is. The autism field, there are several locations, you know, but again, transportation may override it. What I do think, it can be negotiated price with the individual. I think we need to...
Yeah, I think that's true.
And Ed's shaking his head. I mean, we say, no, this is what we're, you know, we're budgeting, we're budgeting, you know, here's what it is. Whether it's, you know, the one student you referred to that was 83, it's like, no, we're going to do 75, and say, look, this is, this is what we can afford. Why is it that price for a student? I mean, what do you get? That's a pretty expensive price. And I know we've had, you know, unfortunately, young students that were costing us well over, you know, $200,000 a year in past budgets, you know, because of their extreme, yeah. And those students finally, you know, are older and so forth. That's how they actually come out of the system. So, their, special ed is an animal amongst itself that costs districts all the time. And out-of-district money, if you go back, we're slowly, not slowly, sometimes we have sharp spikes, and last year, you know, this year is a fairly good spike. You know, we're going to go from, again, 1,370 up to, you know, over 1 and 1/2 million. So, I, again, we have time to discuss, and I hope we look at it. Line 171, oops.
Same topic? Clay?
Basically, yes.
Question? Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, it's about the budget itself.
Oh.
I'll hold off.
Okay, I got about four more.
Can I just say, comment to what Ken is saying? Why don't, it seems like it would be, make sense for us to schedule some sort of portion of a meeting at some point in time, maybe not before the budget, but after, to go over the kind of thing that Kent is raising, where we can really become experts on what is going on with special ed, what, you know, all the points he's raising.
Carol, my comment is that, comes next week, Thursday night, and we got 170,000 still to find.
Yeah.
And we've had discussions in the past, and it changes. It changes with the administration, it changes with the students we have. I think we're having a major change, and one of the reasons I want to make sure we bring it up tonight, is that we're changing special ed this year, big time. And with us doing that change, I'm amazed that we're going up basically 200,000 in out-of-district. And I want to make sure we're doing our due diligence. We have budget once a year. Once we pass that vote next Thursday, our opportunity for another year goes away.
But Kent, I don't understand how, changing the special ed structure we have, I don't understand the correlation between that and the fact that this out-of-district is going up.
One of the things I would hope that the special ed director had was out-of-district students under that individual. That's correct?
Right, and you...
Talking of negotiating?
Right.
You also have a halftime-funded position that is the out-of-district coordinator as well. You know, where you'll see the savings, because it is only out-of-district tuition money, is in, the director has always shown up in 151 Sped Elementary, and so you'll see the adjustment from 1.178 million to 1,059 million. That's where the director's salary, for historical reasons, I guess, has always been there. So, you won't look in 165 and see a downward trend because of a change.
No, no, I'm not seeing it, and I know, I looked at where that will be pulled on out. You know, it comes under, like you say, within the holistic of that.
151, yeah.
Is, is that, we're still going up. The single largest gain that this district will see next year, per student, comes under out-of-district tuition. And with us making this major change, the question comes to my head is, why is out-of-district going up that substantial amount? And I'm hoping, you know, it's not an offset because of...
And I'm telling you, it's at the level that, Water Seeks, it's right at the level it's at currently, and it's based on real numbers, real children projected out a year from now. So, that's what we're paying this year. It's not a dramatic increase because we're, we're thinking there's going to be a change in director.
No.
It's exactly the level, those, it's a student-by-student accounting and where they're at and what the tuitions are for next year.
So, we're thinking on those student-by-students and/or, and additional students or two may come in, is that there's going to be an increase to those facilities that we send them to.
I think what he's saying, and maybe I'm wrong, is we underfunded this year. The number that we have in the 1.3 is actually higher this year. That's what we funded, that's what we budgeted, but actually it's costing more than that. And this is a more realistic number.
Again, I don't want to get to Thursday night, and we're still looking for about 170...
Right. I would not recommend you make an adjustment there.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Line 171, I've always said, I'm never quite sure, and I've never been a believer, and I've never taken it, and believe me, there are years such as this year, that'd be nice to have taken the stipends for the school board budget. But I also then see that we, under operating, that, you know, there's an additional 7,000. And I highly recommend that if we're going to be once preaching to the school system, preaching to those that want to have a respect, we take that 7,000 out of there. And when we have our retreats, I think that's where that kind of comes in, the retreat costs and some costs like that, that we, we fund it, you know, we bring our own lunch or we all make a poll. It's only 7,000, but I've always had a gripe with that for the last X amount of years. Under another number that seemed to jump out to me as I went over the big numbers here, not the finites, is 180, which is the travel in district. We're going to go from 26,000 up to 32,000 next year. That's a fairly significant increase, and not quite sure why. Is that correct?
Steve, from 31.5 to 32.
Going from 31 to 32.
Oops, wait a minute. Maybe I'm off.
Looking on the operating side of it.
Operating.
It's going up 300 bucks.
Okay, all right. Set on that. Maintenance is going up to, going up a fair amount, is that within salaries? I mean, I'm looking at the whole list, and then I look and I subtract out the actual operating, you go from, you're only going up basically 3,000 on the operating side, so there's a difference there. Is that mostly contractual?
It was contractual before we made the, before we made the deletion.
Okay, before the deletion.
Right. You're looking at the first one I handed out.
Right.
It doesn't have the deletions. That's correct.
And then lastly, I know that you're in negotiations, and know in the past, we've had board members participate with the pupil transportation. You're not showing an increase at this time, but is that a possibility where we get to pupil, I mean...
We, actually, in the adjusted one, there isn't. We moved it up.
I mean, do you think that's, the adjusted one that you gave us, fairly accurate, or you don't know?
It's a crapshoot, just like everything else we're doing. It's a guess, I mean, it's an estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Clay?
I was going to respond to the transportation. With the same, you know, concept of just painting the 5% brush across, do we know what the actual impact would be if we, if we took and said, let's take, you know, 5% or 10% of the transportation budget? And we have 800,000, 10%, 80,000. You know, what does the model actually look like in terms of, you know, shrinking the route to say, you know, instead of picking kids up within this distance, it's now, you know, 1/10 mile further out, and we suddenly lose this band? You know, granted, bus contracts are done on a specific route, and if you're passing kids, you pick them up, and so we might not gain any efficiencies by squeaking it out, but I'm just curious, you know, where would that actually look like?
The only way you're going to save in transportation...
Fewer buses, shorter distance.
Well, your pains, the contracts are based on somebody bus, a cost per bus per day, which is, they figure it on what you've got for routes and give you a mileage cap so that you, if you go over that mileage, it'd be an adjustment. If, you'd have to eliminate a chunk. I don't know if, the 1/10 piece, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think it's a manageable thing, but I know you're using it for an example. I think you would have to take a chunk. I mean, you could sit there and say, you know, right now, we have, you know, half-mile, one-mile, two-mile radius type stuff, and if they're within a certain one, we don't provide it, unless there's extenuating circumstances and there's a bus going by and we have capacity. We constantly have requests to expand and expand and expand, and we aren't able to because we're at capacity. And so, in the past, the only way we've made any adjustments is to eliminate something. We eliminated the light bus at the high school. You could eliminate high school transportation. You can eliminate the elementary, obviously, because you have to do it by law.
Right.
Those are the types of things you'd have to do. I don't, I don't think, you know, a 10th here, a 10th there is going to, going to do it. We put in an estimate, an estimate increase, it's a, you know, it's a guess, it's a crapshoot, we'll see what happens. I'm working on an RFP, but I sort of held off a little bit because we were talking about adjusting some times, so I would like to be able to have the most recent, you know, configuration to put in the RFP, which is in process and will go out soon. So, I already have the, I have the model. But the question is, you know, we can go and do, say, high school trans, like you would for a building project, you could do high school as an add alt or a deduct alt to see, you know, what the, what the difference would be. You could eliminate light bus... You could eliminate late buses. Part of the, this, this special ed transportation piece is we contract for so many to try to cover, um, you know, the areas, and a few end up with, um, that gets overtaxed, you have to add more, and that's just like the one that Kent was talking about, you sort of stuck, because that, part of that transportation is IEP-related, just like placements. So that's a difficult one as well. So, um, I think if we're going to make any movement there, you're going to have to eliminate another late bus or eliminate a group that you legally could eliminate.
Okay.
Clay, thank you for being patient.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Steve, this is a great report here, this General Fund Operating Expense Reduction Report. It's, uh, self-explanatory and, um, it's, it's nicely put together. Um, I know that there's many formats that we could have done, and, in fact, I can read it like a storyboard. Thank you. Um, but I was curious, um, is this report on the city of course, the school board website, this would allow the, um, public to go over this, read it, and then if they had any questions, um, on February eighth, they could, they could ask us then, and, um, and then hopefully, um, clarify any, any issues that people may have.
Even though it's a draft.
It's not on the website, but--
It's, it's not?
It is not on the website. No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
To answer your question, no, it is currently not on the website.
It's not?
So people could actually see it, and as you say, you can easily read through it and get a sense of what five percent means.
Right. And then if they want to bring something to our attention, they can do that at, at the public hearing.
You could do that, no?
Sure. Yeah. Do what you tell us.
Thank you.
I didn't know I had that kind of power.
You should do.
In terms of the transportation, my understanding, the high school travels free of charge, correct? Buses?
Yes. Yeah, I think if what--
We stopped that when we--
What they used to do--
Added parking.
Right. What they used to do was try to charge and have a punch ticket.
Right.
Um, I think it becomes problematic in terms of, of how you administer that, it adds another layer. So apparently the alternative was that if we did that, that we would go and, um, charge for parking permits for those that could drive and use part of, you know, that parking permit money--
To pay--
--goes to offset the cost of the bus contract.
I just wondered what, what kind of cost that is for the, for the, for the high school run.
Well, we, uh, we've actually never, we actually never separated it out that way in the contract, so--
Oh, they do a dual.
Because we have thirteen buses and they start off with a, um, combined high school and middle school--
Middle, yeah.
And then we go into the next round with the elementary school, so--
So that wouldn't help.
So I'm, I'm not sure that would help, and, and again, that's why I was trying to be so careful about if we're changing times, how it affects the waves in the RFP.
Right.
Um, so I've sort of, you know, tried to wait an extra couple of weeks to put it out to see how that would work. But I, again, if I put certain chunks on there, chunks on there as add alternates or something in the bids, we might have a better chance of being able to figure out what one particular portion costs over another.
Yeah. We could look into it. Thank you.
That's the way I have it written, the sample right now.
Carol?
Um, aren't we negotiating a new contract with the bus company?
We're actually putting out an RFP.
Okay.
You could direct me to go and renegotiate, but I think the, what I, what I was getting was the general consensus was, is that we negotiated, you know, some extensions and it was time to put it out, and--
Okay. Is there any potential for cost savings? Or do you think it's going to end up being the same as what we've paid, or could it be more?
I expect, I expect that it will be more.
Okay.
Um, the only way it would be less, um, would be, again, if we let a piece go, because you have to stop and think that right now they're using, um, well-depreciated buses, which is how they could keep where it was leveled. So, um, you know, usually when we write it, we put a, um, a range age of buses, so especially if it was going to be a, a new contractor, you'd end up, which is why we can't wait too long to put it out, because it takes a while to get new buses, you know, ordered. So, um, I don't have any high hopes that it's going to be less without cutting out a piece.
Okay. Okay. That's good to know, thanks.
Just this whole bus discussion makes me think, I mean, how many students at the high school do take the bus? And is it possible to have fewer buses that run? Like, I know they're often not at capacity. The flip side is we don't want kids on the bus for an hour, but is there some sort of, I mean, has that been looked at?
The, the way the routes are structured right now, I know it does frustrate some people because they look and they say, well, our bus isn't full, but in order to get a full bus, you don't have enough time with the waves to be able to make them go the extra and still do it. Can we make adjustments? We make adjustments every year, actually. It's, I mean, I would like to get a little more scientific, but we're, I guess what people don't understand is we're really not a big system, even though we've got thirteen buses. It's not a big, it's, we're really not a big system, so, um, you know, we could invest in some software and try to do it, do some, you know, tweaking of it, but we're sort of small.
So if the, if the times were more staggered between the schools, is that--
Well, you only have so much time you can stagger them, you know, I mean, right now, what, what happens if you end up with a glitch or something, is a domino effect all through, all of them. So right now, Dondaro's at the end, so if anything, Dondaro's going to be late, you know?
They are.
And they have been, and so we're trying to adjust that, but it's probably a weather, and there's a lot of snow out there, and, you know, I think it's, you know, it was kind of disruptive to the schedule. But we also, you know, are constantly trying to, to keep the adjustments, you know, when you, when you add one, you'd like to be able to drop one off, so I don't, I don't know that there's any magic bullet by separating the waves out any more than they are, that you'd be able to reduce them significantly, perhaps, you know, perhaps a bus. I mean, it all depends on how you size them as well. So, I mean, when I got here, they were that size. Um, the guy that I'm working with, the consultant I'm working with in terms of the RFP is asking, you know, do you really need them that size? You know, what are your thoughts? What was the basis? So we're trying to figure out what, what is the best mix. And we may, you know, we'll put it out as an RFP, um, so, you know, that allows a contractor some latitude to come back and say, well, I think if you did it this way, we could come up with this, and, which is why I prefer an RFP rather than a straight bid. Now, we did that the last time that we did, uh, copiers, for example, and I did it as an RFP rather than a straight bid, and we ended up with a much better configuration because we gave them the latitude to present a solution, rather than just respond to A, B, and C.
And we still have the St. Pat's kids that, that join our buses? We had, we waited at Dondaro many times, all the buses were waiting in line because the St. Pat's bus would come, and, and kids would get off and get on our buses.
We have, the, you know, the way it's set up is that if we have existing capacity that doesn't increase the expense, then, then we're, you know, have made an obligation--
So that's still--
That's still in effect. We've had to adjust, um, you know, they changed, they changed their time last year and it threw us, uh, it made it hard for them, and so, um, they actually, I think they put it back because, um, we just, we just didn't have the capacity in the system to be able to do that, so.
Leslie?
I was going to change the subject, so I didn't know if we were done.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so if you think that the transportation costs may go up next year, and yet we budgeted it at exactly the same number--
Actually, in the revised one, we did make an adjustment.
It's up.
Up, we add, we added.
Do we have the revised one?
You don't have the revised one yet.
Okay.
I can give you a revised copy sheet for the next meeting, because we'll have more.
Okay. Because I was going to say--
More revisions. I did level fund it, no.
Yeah, sounds dangerous.
I know, Leslie, had a different ques, just in regards to the buses, though, our total cost for all late bus runs, and again, I'm, maybe this is somewhere in the negotiations, we can look at it differently, with all the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school comes to thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. That's what our late buses, so when you talked about chunks, you know, there's a chunk of, and again, there are great programs, we know at the middle school, which is our highest single cost for, for late buses, because we run a double out of there.
Two.
We're on two out of there, so, I mean, somewhere, I mean, I, I'm just assuming next week, we're going to be looking for dollars, and, uh, I don't want to see these things go away, but, uh, it's heavy discussion. Thank you.
Leslie?
Um, I want to go back to the document that Clay was talking about, the General Fund Operating Document, and I think it's a great idea to put this kind of information on our website and be as transparent as possible. I'm a little worried that this is not going to be helpful, though, in terms of what people will bring to us in terms of, um, suggestions. You know, we sort of have a sense of what some of these things are, but I think it's just, there's so many questions, and I can imagine, you know, fifty-five people lined up waiting to say, well, why are you spending twenty-nine thousand dollars on general supplies at Dondaro? And they won't have any idea what general supplies are. I think this is too, it's just too broad, too general, too much, you know, unspecified information to just, you know, put out there for people to bring in and ask us questions about it. I'm thinking that the budget book that, um, we're going to be putting out--
In March.
--very soon, in March, is a much more helpful document, so I'm a little worried about putting this online and what, you know, how to interpret it.
This was designed as a working document.
Right, right, right. And it's, it is a draft, so, and it's probably changing. It will change, it's a little bit fluid, so I guess I would caution us before we--
Yes, so before we then give instruction to the administration to put it online, is it okay with you if we, if we not?
That's fine. That's fine. Um, because I can see where some people might not understand the, uh, the department codes.
That's true, too.
And, uh, you know, to me, it's all--
But you find it helpful?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, thank you, bye. Anyone else? Any other thoughts? Carol? Yes?
Um, because we're running out of time, I'm just going to throw it all out--
Only a shot.
--tonight. In terms of the discussion regarding PEAP, um, it got me wondering if, um, we could, um, discuss with whoever we have the lease with, if we could talk to them about what we're paying and, and say, you know, we may have to leave, we don't want to leave, we want to stay here, but could you make it a little better for us? It seems like there'd be no reason not to ask. Particularly with the economy the way it is, and we're a, you know, a community organization.
So that's the Foundation for Seacoast Health?
Is that what is, is that who it is? I don't know who it is. Okay.
And this is sort of like a co-op, so it's sort of like divided out, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
So it might be a little difficult to give us preferential treatment and not the other--
Maybe they could give everybody, you know, give everybody a break this year.
Well, I believe, I mean, I could be wrong, but I believe that organization was established when the hospital--
That's correct.
--lived profit. You know, so that's a nonprofit, it's, well, it's a foundation, so, so it might be worth talking to them about.
Uh, and then the other thing, other question I had was to talk to them about a lease to own, if we, you know, are going to continue with this lease. Um, see if that's, if there's any possibility for that. Um, and then the other comments in terms of areas where there might be savings, um, I think that we should look at the high school electives, I've talked to you at about that.
Mm-huh.
Um, just descriptions of what each elective is, who teaches it, how many students are in it, um, and see, um, you know, what we have when we look at that, and I, I'd like for us to have a discussion about that. Um, oh, and this is just one very small, random comment. Um, I, I guess, the uniforms for all the sports, um, the school department pays for those, or the parents pay for them, I'm not, I don't--
Students. I mean, the, the school district--
The school? What about having parents who can afford it pay for uniforms?
Well, that's not, that doesn't happen all the time. I mean, I know, I know the boosters often buy new helmets, or, I mean, you probably can speak to that more.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a certain amount of money allocated for uniforms, and the, you know, athletic department figures out which ones they can do, and I don't know if Russ has a specific--
Rotation.
--rotation or level. I'm pretty sure he has a rotation on the equipment that, you know, the expensive equipment, but I do know that he, they do get, um, a lot of generous donations from the booster clubs in terms of turning uniforms over. So that, I don't believe that that uniform amount you see in that book in any, in any way goes to cover all the uniforms in the sports--
Okay. The same is for band, the same goes for band.
Correct.
I mean, they do, they raise money for their own--
They raise their own, comes from the band boosters and Parents Music Club and things like that, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Along that line, it might be, um, interesting to see, you know, we budget so much for uniforms and so much for different things, how much we rely on outside funding? So, it, to find out the difference, like, if, you know, it really costs fifty thousand dollars for uniforms, but we only budget thirty thousand, and, you know, we rely on an additional twenty thousand. I think that would be really interesting, because we see this line that, oh, we spend X amount of money on whatever, when in fact the cost is actually much greater. I know that, I would, I would find that helpful, that it, it really is above and beyond, and, and we get outside help with it. The same with, with counting volunteer hours. I know Little Harbor did a really wonderful job of how many hours volunteers logged, and then we were able to translate that into how many full-time positions we're getting, you know, for free with the generous donation of time and money from parents. I think there are a lot of other costs that we never see.
Okay. Everyone looks content.
Well, I wouldn't go that far. We're just trying to think about it.
Well, just procedurally, so, public hearing, regular business meeting Tuesday, there are elements that were mentioned this evening, you're looking for answers back on Thursday night.
One other number, if you could get--
Excuse me?
One other number, because I, and again, I don't, I know, I stand quite alone, I think, sometimes on this PEAP thing, but, you know, the way it's been presented, and, and I think it's quite wrong, is, is that those are students of, uh, economic needs, and I'd like to actually get, because whether, how they would fall into a free and reduced lunch, I know they don't quite hit that formula, because I don't think that's a totally true picture. Uh, I don't know if it's fifty-fifty percent that, uh, you know, the students are financial of need, and then they're out there, because the PEAP program is not one for, uh, financially needed special ed students, it's for all students, and I think there's been a misre, because I, I did have a heavy discussion with some people on that, that that's, that's a very wrong perception, that only X amount of those students need to go down the street or down the, down the street, down the hall to some of the other services.
So you're specifically just the PEAP students?
Just the PEAP ones.
Not Community Child Care, not--
No, because the PEAP's the only one we pay for.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, we'll try to get that for you.
Sure. Okay. Motion to adjourn?